All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. City Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole will meet in person on Tuesday, May 9, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of meeting with Mr. James Davis from the Bay Stateers for Natural Medicine to discuss legalizing certain plant medicines. This meeting will be held in the City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts, second floor. Individuals may listen, view, participate remotely in the meeting via remote participation platform called Zoom either in the following ways. Please click the link below for the webinar, password 121862, or telephone 888-475-4499, toll-free 877-853-5257, webinar ID 880-7506-9093. We also have a link to the previous recording of the meeting that is posted on the website as well for the Public Health, Safety and Environment Committee co-posted with the Committee of the Whole that was held on February 22, 2023. Every effort we made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means in the event we are unable to do so, the matter is not requiring a public hearing, will also be posted on the city Salem's website or audio, video recording transcript or other comprehensive record and proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The agenda tonight, as we discussed or we stated, basically, meeting with Mr. James Davis, the Bay Stateers, as the original order was set out for natural medicine to discuss legalizing certain plant medicines. So with that, I want to quickly just recap and go over that. We are literally doing a redo of this meeting because there was an open meeting law violation because last meeting we did have an issue with the posting of the actual date. So apologies on that, same with the clerk's office. So with that, we will do a quick recap with Mr. James Davis on his presentation, very short recap. So tonight with us, we have Mr. James Davis of the Bay Stateers as our presenters, and we also have Dr. Miyabi Shields, Ph.D., who is basically has her Ph.D. in the study of the endocannabinoid system in the system that reacts with the brain. I screwed it up again, I'm so sorry. But Dr. Shields is able to answer any questions that we have tonight concerning the safety and efficacy of mushrooms as well. So with that, and we also have Chief Lucas Miller as well here. Thank you for being here, Chief. So we'll get started with Mr. Davis. We'll have a quick recap. I do have your PowerPoint up here, which I will share, and we'll start with you, sir. Let's see. One second, James. Start this up here.
Thank you for that kind introduction, Andy, and thank you to all of the city councilors of Salem for the opportunity to educate and share some research evidence and experience about plant medicines and what we've learned through their decriminalization in five other Massachusetts cities, those cities being Somerville, Cambridge, Northampton, Easthampton, Amherst, with a few on the way as well. So thank you so much. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Mr. Davis. Just want to let the record show that we have Counselor Cohen of the Public Health, Safety and Environment Committee, as well as Alice Merkel and myself, tonight here as well. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. So psilocybin mushrooms have been used by humans for at least the last 10,000 years in many different cultural contexts, from wine that Greeks consumed to indigenous use throughout Central and South America for ceremony. And psilocybin is an incredible tool for not only mental health, but also just personal flourishing and self-growth. And so, as our group has grown, Bay Stateers for Natural Medicine, we have people from every background you could imagine coming forward to share their stories on how microdosing and larger doses have benefited them tremendously. That includes doctors, therapists, and even veterans and first responders, police officers that have benefited from using these medicines that are currently considered a Schedule I narcotic due to very arcane federal drug laws dating back almost five decades. So we are a coalition of organizations across both mental health, neurological health, and addiction treatment that see these alternatives as a path forward at a time when opioid overdoses are the number one cause of death for people under the age of 45, people like my brother struggling in very intimate battles that destroy entire families and rob kids of opportunity as we create intergenerational cycles of trauma. At a time when a lot of people are depressed, anxious, and more lonely than ever, and seeking connection, something that plant medicine very much helps with when it allows people to ease out of their social anxiety after usually just one use or small uses, microdosing over time. Next slide, please, Andy. So to get this started, let's talk about depression. I was just speaking to the chief before about some of the major causes of death in Salem and many other communities across the state. And one point that occurred to me is our mental health is intimately connected, like a web or a mycelium for people who like mushrooms. For example, anytime a celebrity commits suicide, there's a wave of suicides throughout the United States, and this is true on college campuses as well. There's also a spike in car accidents, probably because people take more risks while driving because they're not actively taking their lives, but they're more willing to risk their lives when we have a collective disturbance like a very visual suicide of a celebrity. And what this underscores is that even if one personally doesn't use psilocybin, one isn't interested in using these types of plant medicines, other people in our community finding relief from them truly benefits us all because, as cliched as it sounds, our mental health, we're all in this together. A 20-year meta-analysis of controlled trials that have been done with psilocybin found statistically significant benefits for depression. This was a study published in the Journal of Psychopharmacology, looking at 20 years of evidence that has been mounting. Psilocybin itself is the most studied pharmacological compound in U.S. history, with thousands of studies published on its use even prior to 1950, about 20 years before it was criminalized. And the reason why it's beneficial, next slide, please, Andy.
One second. I just want to let the record show that Counselor McLean has joined us.
Thank you, Counselor. And one major reason why it's beneficial, it allows people to dissolve a lot of the rumination cycles that tell them they're not good enough, or, you know, force them to focus on traumatic episodes in their life instead of being able to set a vision and course for the future, set new goals, think in a new way. And that effect is referred to as neuroplasticity because psilocybin mushrooms are neurogenerative. They can quite literally allow new brain cells to form in the brain, and so with the proper care intentions and setting, controlled setting, a calm setting, like with a trusted friend, with a therapist, or with a mental health care provider, they can be incredibly beneficial for forming new habits of mind and for setting intentions and goals for the future, setting a path forward through depression and substance use. Another major cause of death across Massachusetts, we lose almost one person every four hours throughout the Commonwealth to opioid overdoses. By the time this meeting is over, someone will be on that path to, you know, a family losing their son or daughter. Back one side, please. And a study of 44,000 Americans found that a single use of psilocybin reduces the risk of daily opiate use by nearly 40%. And several of the mechanisms involved are, first, allowing people to get to the source of their trauma, which we know derives addiction issues, and then, second, providing relief with the neuroreceptors in the brain that interact with withdrawal. And that study was actually backed up by another one in the International Journal of Drug Policy, this time in Canada, and found an even stronger effect of 55%. There's also other plant medicines on the way that we hope are eventually legalized throughout the Commonwealth, including ibogaine, which is legally available in Costa Rica, in Jamaica, in New Zealand. And that's the ironic part about a lot of these plant medicines. There are people from Massachusetts who pay many thousands of dollars to fly to other countries to access these medicines, or in the case of psilocybin, will sometimes fly all the way to California to get them from a loved one, when there are plenty of people who grow them right here in Salem and right in North Shore. And if they were allowed to be transparent and talk about it, you know, people wouldn't struggle to find this fungi that is helping them feel better. Next slide, please.
If I may be blunt, Mr. Davis, I know this is posted on the last meeting from, it's a recorded, so if we can give you, could we get the underbridge version?
You got it. You got it. This table simply, for those watching at home that are going to watch the other recording as well, this demonstrates the cost-effectiveness and non-addictiveness of psilocybin and ibogaine compared to many commonly prescribed medication-assisted treatments. Next slide, please. This also has critical implications for crime as a whole in the United States because a lot of people that commit common crimes, they're acting out of a place of trauma. So a study of almost 200,000 U.S. inmates in Georgia found that, again, a single use of a psychedelic substantially reduced the likelihood of folks, when they get out of the carceral system, reoffending in a violent way, committing property crime, or getting involved in the illicit substance trade more generally. And that's likely because when people have this experience, they have a better vision of their lives going forward. Thank you. This table is from The Lancet, one of the most prestigious journals in the world, and it finds that mushrooms have the lowest harm profile of any controlled substance. At the top is alcohol, which I enjoy a great deal once in a while, but has a lot of social and physical harms associated with it. And what this underlines is that prohibition makes us all a lot less safe because we're unable to educate about the best way to use these medicines, the best context to use these medicines, and the right dosage to use these medicines. Neurogenesis also has a lot of potential treatments for cluster headaches and other painful migraine conditions, and may soon teach us enough about the brain to overcome challenges like Alzheimer's and dementia as well, as many early studies have shown. By and large, Massachusetts voters, when they are polled, strongly support decriminalizing homegrowing and sharing of these plant medicines. A poll in Boston Globe on our work showed that nine in 10 supported ending those arrests. Another poll, I believe through Boston.com, showed eight in 10 supported this policy. It's a supermajority support, and this measure in Salem will help us build momentum for statewide reform as well. So our measure tonight means more conversations between parents and their kids, more conversations between therapists and their clients, and more conversations between doctors and their patients. It means more choices for people who desperately need them at a time when our mental health crisis is rearing its ugly head. And it means more transparency and trust because, let's face it, when we don't have legitimate policies on the books, people start to distrust their city, they start to distrust the entire public health community. And that's why it's important we are honest and acknowledge the benefits of psilocybin. Thank you so much, Counselor.
Thank you much, Mr. Davis. So with that, tonight, we will be discussing the actual resolution for the city of Salem. So with that, I'd like to bring up Dr. Shields up here, who helped draft the ordinance here, I'm sorry, the resolution here, and with Chief Miller. And I will bring Chief up here as well. We've had a couple of meetings with Lucas, if you guys want to come up here together. We will, we will. So just wanted to make this clear, within drafting the resolution, we felt that it was appropriate that we start with specifically psilocybin. So this resolution is just about psilocybin, plants containing basically psilocybin. I will bring up the resolution, which all the councilors have, and I know there's a couple being passed around, which I'm happy to, I have more documents for you guys. So with that, if you could, Dr. Shields, explain why for Salem, I think this is an appropriate measure to start with going forward.
Oh, sure. Hi, I'm Dr. Miyabi Shields. I am a Salem resident. I reside at Fort, yeah, I reside at 469 Loring Avenue in Salem, and I am also a research scientist who specializes in the intersection of neurodiversity and chemodiversity for cannabis and psychedelics. I have been in the research world in these realms for the past 14 years. I've dedicated my life to researching the molecular mechanism of these substances and how they can help each of us individually, and as James mentioned, as a community. And one of the reasons why I'm so passionate about decriminalization, and specifically when it comes to psilocybin-containing mushrooms, fungi, is that there is unprecedented, like, proof and evidence in the scientific literature that there is a therapeutic benefit that isn't seen and that isn't addressed, and that is currently a growing problem that we need to address. Another reason why I think that psilocybin-containing mushrooms are a good place for Salem to start has to do with something exactly that James mentioned, which is about cultivation, and it's about safety, and it's about the ability for us to have a knowledgeable and trusted community, and a knowledgeable and trusted, built, like medicinal community that is more than just individuals and is more than just this kind of sterile interaction of like, that is one molecule that is going to give us this benefit. It's so, it's so much more than that. It's been more than that in our communities for thousands and thousands of years, and I think it's a piece of our health that has been missing and that should be addressed. And I think that for Salem, and I've been a resident here for a year now, it's a way to get this conversation started. We can build more community supports, and we can start creating the ability for our other, and we'll hear them speak later in public commentary, that there are already people here in Salem who are ready to bring their expertise to the table, who are ready to build something out that's greater, and we can be an example for how we can do this in a way that is safe, in a way that is focused on the therapeutic effects, and is focused also on empowering the community so that each of us can feel comfortable even making our own medicine in a way that is controlled and is a way that is safe and accepted. And I'll hand it over to Chief Miller to have him give his commentary on what, you know, we are proposing or what the city council is considering.
Thank you, Dr. Shields. Chief Miller?
Thank you. I touched on it a little bit last time, and I'll bring it up again, the degree to which substance use disorder and specifically deaths as a result of fentanyl overdose, opiate overdose, is probably the thing that keeps me up at night the most, that the mortality in Salem as a result of this is more than any other sort of thing that falls under my jurisdiction, as it were. So I think it would be irresponsible to stand in the way of developing a potential therapy that would assist with this. Similarly, mental health calls, mental health issues drive a tremendous portion of police calls. So similarly, therapies that could assist with that, I think, would benefit Salem, and would specifically benefit the Salem Police Department. Arrests, force possession of psilocybin were already a relatively low priority for the Salem Police Department, but I want to thank you, Counselor Varela, and thank you, Dr. Shields, for working with me to put language in this resolution that was really, that was palatable to a chief of police. I think, I think the, the degree to which you call on action or inaction from the police department is entirely reasonable, and it's not, it's not a heavy lift for me. So I'm very pleased to be part of this, to take part in the crafting of the resolution, but also to get out of the way of progress.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief Miller. With that, any questions from the councilors? Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Varela. No questions, everything's been explained really clearly, just a couple of comments. First of all, I really appreciate all the time everyone has taken to come here and provide all the education on this. Personally, this has been very educational for me, and I really appreciate Chief Miller's perspective as well, because I think that's an important piece of, piece of this, of putting, you know, putting this together, and I really like the points you made of, you know, in reference to the, you know, tragic amount of overdoses that we certainly don't want to stand in the way of any, any new therapies. As someone myself who has been on medication for, you know, for psychiatric reasons, any options out there to help is, is huge. And also, I also feel, you know, in reading the resolution and the work that went into it, you know, it is a step we can take towards, you know, addressing the impact of, you know, what is called the war on drugs, as, you know, we know has, you know, led to unnecessary penalization, arrest, and incarceration of vulnerable people. It targets people of color, just as written in the resolution here, and I think any step we can take in that direction is really impactful as well. So, yeah, I welcome all of you being here and the information we've received on this. It's been super helpful, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Merkel. Any other members from the council? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Chair Varela, and my apologies to everybody for being late. I'm also, I'll also start with a comment that I appreciate, this, this conversation. I think, I think in the current context of our society where it's very clear that addiction and struggles with mental health are really running rampant, certainly, I think, in the wake of COVID, we've seen an explosion in the need for, for therapeutic and mental health services that unfortunately is, is not being met, I think, by the medical system that we have now due to lack of capacity. I think having conversations like this is really important, and anything that sort of highlights and amplifies the conversation around the need to provide for the mental well-being of the people in our communities is really important. So I'm very appreciative of that, and I'm appreciative of all the information that's come forward about it, now twice. So I do want to ask the chief specifically, knowing that you've had an opportunity to work on the drafting of this language along with Dr. Shields and Counselor Varela, and knowing that as it stands now, this already is a relatively low priority for our police department, this is not something that is, not something that is generating a lot of issues in our community as it stands. Do you see anything in the language before us that would impede your ability to maintain the safety of the community should the landscape change, right? Let's say that people do, in fact, begin to engage with this at a higher rate and in a deeper way. Do you feel that you'll still be able to do what you need to do in order to regulate the behavior of the community, disruptive behavior, and make sure that there's sort of a safe, a safe playing field going on out there for the average citizen?
I do. I think, you know, it sort of rests in that word, deprioritization. We do prioritize different laws based on a number of different factors, dangerousness, community standards, things like that, but we can always adjust our priorities when a need arises. And one of the things that I appreciate about the resolution is it, it doesn't take away my ability to enforce any law in the state of Massachusetts, but it does simply change that priority.
Thank you, thank you for that. I think that's, I think that's a really important question because I think a lot of, a lot of what we're discussing here is, is, as Counselor Merkel said, going to be educational for a lot of people. There are some people that I think are familiar with information like this, but I think for a lot of members of the community, this is going to be something new. And so I think that question of, are we going to be able to be responsible as the situation changes is going to be really important, so I appreciate that information.
Awesome. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Varela. So, excuse the pun, but this is a high-level conversation, and although there's been a lot of three-syllable words, and I'm exced at four, I mean, four-syllable words, and I'm exced at three, I do want to express my appreciation for this resolution for a few reasons. When I was Chair of Salem's No Place for Hate Committee, which is now the Human Rights Coalition, we always brought Wendy Kent in to speak about the stigma of substance and how it, the stigma by itself prevents people from maintaining housing, getting, you know, jobs they may have applied for, et cetera. And so I think it's really important that we have, in addition to this resolution, the kind of outreach and education that we need, and Chief Miller and I spoke before about some potential sources that can accommodate that. And I do appreciate the openness and collaboration from the police, that involvement is really going to be prioritized when it's necessary. So I'm very much for this. I think the other councilors talked about this, the impact it has on our marginalized communities, and, and the lack of awareness that we have in our general community about the benefits, a lot of the things that Mr. Davis talked about. I am going to make a quick plug. I was on the opiate task force, the Citizens Opiate Task Force, it's, it's a little bit dormant now, but we've had meetings with the police department, the Community Impact Unit, and Healthy Streets, who are here, thank you. And, yeah, friends of ours in the community and the work they do that is really, maybe only underappreciated because people aren't aware of all the good work they do in coordination with the police department. But we are going to revitalize an event that we used to do every year. Basically, it's a remembrance day, as the chief said, you know, although we may have less overdoses, the, the cost and the severity of some of the substances are so dramatic that we've had more deaths, unfortunately. And we're going to have a remembrance day, so you don't have to live in Salem, everyone in the room and the public is invited on August 31st. It'll be late afternoon, we'll publicize it, and we'll have people from the task force and Healthy Streets and the police department, we usually have some T-shirts made up, hope you've already approved that. And I think this goes in line with the misconception that people have that these substances that people can grow themselves or at some point maybe get in a different, from a different source are just meant for people to get high and not used to treat a variety of things that they have no other means to, you know, that they have no other means to, you know, to address the things that are affecting them. So I'm very supportive and I am anxious to hear from other people in the public, but I do want to also express my appreciation to you, Chair, for your, you know, persistence on this and bringing back an even bigger group than we had at the last meeting.
Thank you, counselor. And before we move to public comment, I just wanted to thank Chief Miller and Dr. Shields. I really believe that this is a much larger conversation. It's about harm reduction. How do we get creative with not only education about these substances, but how do we figure out a way to treat people differently? So thank you for your time on this. So with that, I'd like to open up to public comment. I would like to start if Mr. Brendan O'Connor would like to come up and speak a little bit about what you do and the advocacy for this type of medicine. Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
Certainly. Thank you again. So yes, my name is Brendan O'Connor residing at 211 Rand Tool in Beverly. So I'll briefly highlight some of the topics that I covered in the last meeting, but would encourage any questions afterwards if, for the details I needed. So as my, my role as Vice President of Operations at Cambridge Biotherapies in Cambridge and Amherst, we treat lots of patients that are struggling from depression, anxiety, PTSD, OCD, trauma, many of which can manifest into things like addiction, right? And the efficacy of, we use ketamine infusions, which is another psychedelic, much like psilocybin is a psychedelic. So, so the, the mechanisms of action in terms of the, the experience of a psychedelic, we don't exactly know how that works, right? There's lots of exciting clinical studies that are coming out now that will help us understand what the right protocols, what the right substances are for the right illnesses. But we, we know that, you know, for whatever reason, the psychedelic experience is this unifying sort of experience in a sense, regardless of the substance that you use to get there. So in other words, what I'm, what I'm proposing is that the results that we see that I, I think are very impressive and impactful for treating these mental illnesses with the only psychedelic we have available to us at a federal level with the DEA, which is ketamine, right? I would argue will, are to be expected to also apply to psilocybin. So that's why the commentary and experience that I see, I think, is relevant to this conversation. So we'll, we'll have someone just to walk through a quick protocol because I feel like that's helpful to make this really, you know, at the, at the forefront of like actually how this cares and ministers. So we'll see someone who is suffering and they'll undergo a complete psychiatric evaluation from a prescriber. At that point, if psychedelic assisted therapy or specifically ketamine assisted psychotherapy is deemed appropriate for them, they'll go ahead and go into the clinic for a series of ketamine infusions, followed by psychotherapy, followed by more psychotherapy afterwards, which is commonly called integration. So I wouldn't be surprised if we see very similar models come out in the world, in the clinical world, once tools like psilocybin are available to us clinically. So let me pause there and, and wrap up my comments, but just encourage any additional questions if there may be any.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Would anyone like to come up and give public comment? And if you could state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Matt Stella and I reside here in Salem at 22 Oliver Street. And I just want to thank you guys, thank the council for entertaining and considering what I, what I feel is an important public health and community wellness consideration. And I want to thank you, Chief Miller, for being so open-minded and, and solid in terms of like really keeping in mind the safety of our community where I'm raising my kids, but also open-minded to the risk of not considering measures that might actually improve well-being and community health in other levels. And so it takes an enlightened police chief, in my view, to take that position. So thanks.
Thank you.
I'll try to make it brief, but mainly what I want to share is that I am a psychotherapist in private practice here in Salem, and I work a lot with the effects of trauma in people with histories of abuse and trauma. I worked for about 10 years or so with an organization called Men Healing that works with male survivors of sexual assault and sexual abuse. And I have spent thousands of dollars on trainings for approaches in trying to heal trauma, depression, anxiety. In other words, I'm, I'm seeking tools to empower me, my colleagues, other clinicians to do the healing that we're paid to do and that we care a lot about. Psychedelic medicine, like psilocybin mushrooms, like you're considering decriminalizing, are, offer a certain kind of promise that I just want to, I just want to express to you. Millions of people take medication for psychiatric symptoms and disorders every day, lots of anti-anxiety, anti-depression management kind of medications. And a lot of the tools that are at our disposal as clinicians are about improving someone's life by helping them cope better and better and better with the things that they suffer by. Psychedelic medicine or psilocybin used in a clinical setting is a whole different model, actually, where we're not talking about coping better. We're not talking about being hooked on a medication for your, for the rest of your life or for the next 10 years. We're talking about transformation and healing. We're talking about clearing a trauma out of your nervous system so that you no longer suffer that way. That is radically different model of healing and transformation. That is what's at stake here for the community. I'm coming at it from a mental health, clinical position where I, I feel it's unethical almost to deprive us of using that tool. But Mr. Davis is also making the equally important case for the equity of access of a transformational plant medicine that's been used for thousands of years around wellness. So not just in clinical settings like I would employ it, but for someone that has a safe enough, trustworthy enough setting or friends that can steward them through a psychedelic healing experience, this plant that grows from the earth should be, should be allowed to be used. Let me make one other similar point, which is, we talked a lot about the abuses of addiction, opioid addiction, all of the public health tragedy and expense that comes out of addictive, addictive substances. That's when those substances are used to numb your pain that you can't face or heal. So you self-medicate, right? We all do it in our little ways. I do it with a glass of wine now and then, take the edge off or whatever. You want to numb or relieve or soothe some kind of pain internally that you feel like you can't handle. That's the avoidant way of using substances that leads to addiction. A psilocybin mushroom is a substance used exactly the opposite way. Instead of using it to dissociate you or numb you from your experience, you're using it to associate you in a healthy way with the very thing that was too scary to face. And in doing that, you can heal it and let it go. So we're talking about using a substance as an ally to actually get deeper into reality as opposed to check out from reality. This is a big deal. We all are too checked out from reality. So I really want to thank the council for considering the measure, and I'll leave it at that.
One second, Matt. Counselor Cohen?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Varela, to Mr. Stella. Ironically, Council Merkel, myself, and Chief Miller were at a presentation that LifeBridge did this morning and talking about how many of the people who they provide services to have, in many cases, many different contributing factors for them being unhoused or homeless. You know, it could be DV, it could be, you know, some kind of addiction, it could be some mental health issue, or in many cases, two or three of those at the same time. And one of the themes that I took out of that was instead of always appreciating the problem, is try to find a solution that they can, you know, focus on. And so it sounds like what you're talking about is very similar or the same thing. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. But can you say more about what you, what you're wondering?
So you had brought up that instead of coping with the problem, you try to find some path for someone to be in a different place, if I'm framing that correctly?
Right.
And it seems to be the same thing that they're trying to do. And a lot of this is interrelated.
Yes.
You know, there's a lot of intersectionality with people who are homeless and people who are facing other challenges. And so I was just trying to get you to talk a little bit more about how you want to get away from the traditional way of, of approaching a problem that someone might have.
Yeah, great. Well, being homeless or having trauma in your history or having multiple complex layering of challenges or traumas, especially during developmental years, leaves a big impact on your nervous system and how you engage with the world. Trauma basically disconnects us from our own body, from our own feelings, from each other, from our capacity for relationship, authenticity, intimacy, disconnects us from our world. So healing from trauma, healing from homelessness is reintegration in the community, reconnection with yourself, your worth, reconnection with your relationships and people. Self-medicating addictive substances reinforce the disconnect as a way to continue to disconnect from the pain, but you're also disconnecting from everything good, too. It's a package deal. You're just disconnected. Psilocybin, as an example of a plant medicine, is a connector. In fact, the mechanism, maybe Dr. Shields could say a lot better than I could.
If, Dr. Shields, if you can come up here and explain that, if you may.
I, I, yeah, say, say what you know about like how a fungi is, is on multiple levels an interconnector.
Well, once you learn a little bit more about the mycelial network and how that shifts nutrients for all things that grow in the earth, that is a whole nother realm of, of that. But actually, it was what you mentioned about traditional versus non-traditional and breaking away, one of the most common reasons why there's medical non-compliance for current psychopharmaceuticals is because of that numbing effect or because of these negative side effects that come from specific targeting. And that actually, in terms of breaking that cycle or creating new ways of accessing, like what James brought up, of neurogenerative effects of psilocybin mushrooms, it's, it's a novel way of approaching an issue because it can help you to actually reframe or completely. It is a processing. And there, there are things that we understand and things that we don't yet understand about it. But when it comes to forging new ways for people to actually let go and move on and truly integrate an experience to the point where it's not that you don't have that trauma in your past anymore, it's not that you would like never have occurred, but it's to the point where you're appreciative of it because of how much it's helped you to grow and to move into a next stage of your life and move on to different places. And I think for your question about intersectionality and how this can be addressed, I mean, this has to do with a ton of other inputs in society, and I agree that it's a similar type of approach of decolonizing medicine, of approaching our way of health, of mental and physical health in a way that is different than how we've been approaching it before. And we can reduce it down into, you know, the compounds that are within these mushrooms are unique and are different and in a different combination than what we've been treating with before. We can reduce it down to that and that would be true. And we also can expand it to encompass way more of what we're talking about today about community health and about how as a community, we can heal together in different ways of approaching it and different like access to these medicines. Because again, if, if you were to grow it yourself, that is the best access that you could ever have. It's the most trusted way that you could ever know the quality of your medicine. And in terms of the ancestral perspective of what medicine is, it was much more based around everything that went into it and not just about what is in the molecule and how those molecules can help, which there are new molecules and these new molecules can help, but that it is much more than that. And it is something that requires more than that in terms of the community and that it's exciting. And I think that it is something that is unprecedented and it is something that fits in within that context of what you were describing of, in terms of the unhoused population and what leads to them becoming unhoused and how this is an issue that is more than just one thing, and it's an issue that is more than just one community, for sure. And that one of, one of the ways that we could address this is to address it as a community in more than one way. So it's more than that. It's, it's going to be the food pantries, it's going to be shelters, it's going to be more flexible housing that doesn't require people to be completely sober to check into these housing areas, right? It's going to be community endeavors. And I think that psilocybin medicines fit in as part of that. And in terms of the molecular mechanism, we could just go on for like way too long of how, how it's unique, but it is indeed unique. And there has been more research done on it than has been done on the psychopharmaceuticals and that we have evidence for it as a breaker of cycles, as something that helps people to reframe and refocus and then start again and/or view it as building upon a foundation in a different way.
Thank you, Dr. Shields. And thank you for your comment, Matt. Councilor McLean?
Thank, thank you, Chair Varela. I just, hopefully I'm not overstepping, but I just wanted to offer to anybody in the crowd or with us on Zoom that we have a lot of folks here for public comment who have a lot of professional knowledge about the issues that we're discussing. And so we're very generously sort of taking our questions and sharing their feedback. But if there are folks who just want to offer their opinion or testimony, don't feel like you have to be questioned by us. You're allowed to just come up and give your opinion and sit down.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilor McLean. And yes, I agree, like if you guys want to say something in support about this resolution, please, don't be shy. We really want to hear your input as residents and advocates of this.
Hi, I'm Nancy Wheeler.
Yes, yes. So if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mary Wheeler. I live at 12 Gage Street in Lynn, Mass. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a harm reduction worker for over two decades with people who use substances. I'm hoping that as this comes to fruition, A, I appreciate our strides towards a non-punitive drug policy. And I know watching, and I'm just going to use buprenorphine as an example, when buprenorphine became a medication for folks with opioid use disorder, it was cash only, which limited its availability to people for a very long time. And ketamine therapy, unless I'm incorrect, is not available with anything other than cash for depression and anxiety at this point, which limits its availability to certain upper echelons of individuals suffering from these disorders. Myself being one of them, I cannot afford ketamine therapy as much as I would love to. And I'm hoping maybe Salem might be a really good starting place to consider. If this resolution passes, is there a way that Salem can support all communities that are interested with the information in different languages, different, just, you know, supplies that are free, that are available? You know, I know a lot about growing mushrooms. It's not, it's not cheap. It's not an easy process necessarily. You have to learn a lot about it. You have to have the right supplies and like really teaching that education in an equitable, equitable way, not just to... in an equitable, equitable way, not just to, you know, a certain small group of people. So yeah, that's it.
Awesome. Thank you for your comment. And to build off that, this is exactly why we're trying to decriminalize mushrooms, because it should be readily, readily available to everybody, not just who can afford it. So thank you for your comment. Anyone else from the public or Zoom land that would like to comment? All right, we have Mr. Steve Kapantis. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Steve Kapantis, 23A West area Street, Salem, Mass. I just wanted to say thank you to the committee for having this meeting again, now that it's properly posted. It was great to hear from not just the advocates and residents, but the professionals on this matter as well. So thank you for having this a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Kapantis. All right. Anyone else from the general public? Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Girard. I live at 20 Indreville Road in Salem and I'm a licensed independent clinical social worker. And for many of the people with whom I work, I am very much considered the therapist of last resort. I started working with folks on the autism spectrum who would be considered high cog or high IQ. And those folks have a myriad co-occurring mental health conditions that are severe. Severe chronic depression, social anxiety, et cetera. So in my two decades of working with this population, I know now we need new tools. We need them very badly. These folks are suffering. They're suffering intensely. Modern-day pharmaceuticals are not helping. CBT, DBT, weekly psychotherapy for decades on end is not helping enough. I know there are more tools. They are here. They've been studied. There's research. There's promising new research. And I encourage the community of Salem to embrace that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Girard. Anyone else from the public? All right. So with that, thank you everyone for attending tonight. I think it's a very positive conversation, a very reasonable conversation on the direction we should go with, with psilocybin-cotane and fungi. So with that, if I could get a motion, Counselor Cohen?
Thank you Chair Varela. Just a little bit of logistics. If we move this to the, with a recommendation to the full council, it will be before the council on Thursday at 7:00. If you're interested in doing public comment, you have to sign up by 6:30 on Thursday. You could sign up anytime before that as the agenda is already in place. And with that, and, and incidentally, the public comments are limited to three minutes maximum. So a little bit different than a subcommittee.
Counselor Cohen, one second. We have one more person from the public that wants to talk.
I'll hold off my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Malmstrom, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, hello. I'm Chris Malmstrom. I'm on 45 Essex Street. I just wanted to again echo the thanks for y'all for having this conversation, conversation, starting this conversation. I know from experience from my own, own friends and family members who have utilized this medicine and have noted they felt more substantial impact on their mental health than they've ever felt on drugs such as Lexapro or, you know, many of the others. So I think it's really important that we continue to push this forward and, and I love that you all are doing this. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Malmstrom. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you Chair Varela. And I would like to mention that, just speaking for myself, every meeting, every person, I've learned a lot more from each time. And I move that we refer this to the full council with a positive, this resolution to the full council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Cohen would like to make a positive recommendation to the full council, seconded by Counselor Merkel. We'll do a hand vote. Counselor McLean? We just, actually, you know what? We can just do a raise hand. All those in favor of a positive recommendation to the full council? All right. Let the record show, there's three hands plus my own. The matter carries. If I can get another motion. Before we do another motion, I just wanted to say again, thank you everybody for this thoughtful conversation. This is one of many for us to look in the right direction as far as helping our residents continuing to get the help they need. Pharmaceuticals are not cheap. They're inaccessible to some, whereas psilocybin can be very accessible and can be a tool that all can utilize. So with that.
Motion adjourned.
Counselor McLean, motion's adjourned, seconded by Counselor Merkel. All those in favor? All those in favor? I see three hands plus my own. The matter carries. Thank you everyone. Have a good night.